All right, it is now seven o'clock, so we will begin the Wednesday, March 19th, meeting of the Nottingham Planning Board. Before we get going, please, everyone rise and face the flag for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And I want to welcome our new members, Glenn Griswold, Adam Ryan, thank you both for stepping up and joining us.
Thank you.
And there's Danny Arsenal, who is also on the board but not able to make it tonight. And then, Mr. Decker, thank you for stepping forward from the BOS. You've been with us a few times, but now you're going to be with us most always.
Ex officio le.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. And I'll have the rest, everybody go around and introduce, please.
Chris Evans.
John Decker.
Drew Stevens.
Teresa Bascom.
Glenn Griswold.
Adam Ryan.
Blair Haney, SRPC.
All right, tonight, we have no regular business, but we do have election of officers. And we have a chair, vice chair, and secretary to elect.
I'm going to nominate Teresa Bascom as chair. She has the most experience out of anybody on the board, and I think she would do a good job leading our meetings.
I will second that.
Discussion?
Did you want to, I'll allow for that, hold on one second.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to have me be the chair of the committee. Is there any discussion, Chris?
Yes, there is. Aren't you the chair of the ZBA?
I am not.
You are not?
I was, but I gave up the chairmanship last night, and Terry Bonzer is chair of the zoning board.
Okay, excellent. That answers that question, because you can't chair on two boards according to 673, whatever it is. So, okay, excellent.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be chair? All right. Seeing no further discussion, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, five, zero, one. I will be the one abstaining on that. And the next position would be for vice chair, and I'm going to nominate Drew Stevens for vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay. Seconded by Glenn. It's been moved and seconded to have Drew as the vice chair. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and abstaining? Okay, five oh one. Secretary, Chris, you've been our secretary. Did you want to stay secretary?
It's already printed.
So I'll take that as a yes, as I nominate Chris as secretary.
Second that motion.
Drew. Any discussion? Would anybody else want to take that position? All right, all, it's been moved and seconded to have Chris Evans stay as our planning board secretary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Am I supposed to vote for myself?
You can, that's totally fine.
Good job.
If it was a ballot choice, you'd mark yourself, right?
Sure, I guess.
Or somebody else.
I might pick somebody else. I might not vote for myself. I saw you didn't vote for yourself.
I only didn't because, to be quite honest, it's a reluctant decision, because it's going to be a lot of work. I'm really going to need everybody's back on this, because this, there's a lot that's coming before the board, and I
There's a lot of projects.
Yes, we need everybody's eyes on it and comments. And we'll be appreciating the SRPC input for sure. And speaking of that, Jen is here from SRPC to do a check-in with us, and if you'd like, come up and fill us all in.
So I can keep my voice?
Mm-hmm.
I have a handful, a handful of handouts. I will pass these along, so, let's see. One here, and I do have enough there so that your additional person who is not here tonight can have a copy. The other thing I will
Thanks, Claire.
Bring over to the table. This is our annual report, about six months old now, but nonetheless, give you some nice perspective, and then we'll have some business cards over there, so you can have
Pick a card, any card at all.
All right. Okay, so, good evening. My name is Jen Sis. I am the executive director at the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. I am one of a team of 16 at the Planning Commission for staff. We, as an organization, wear three different hats, and so just for tonight's purposes, I know you have several new board members, so I keep this nice and high level. Hopefully, please, if I say anything that you're like, what is she saying? Pause, you know, raise your hand, ask me to pause, explain myself. So, as an organization, like I said, we wear three hats. The first is established in state statute. We are that of a regional planning commission. Under our existence as a regional planning commission, a lot of our work centers around land use and environmental planning issues. We work directly with municipalities to provide local technical assistance, and we have a couple of statutory obligations that we fill in those realms. The second hat that we wear is that of a metropolitan planning organization. That is a federal designation under the U.S. Department of Transportation. Where there are urbanized areas, we have a metropolitan planning organization that acts as an intermediary between the municipalities and the state when planning for federal transportation dollars. The third hat that we wear is that of an economic development district. This is also another federal designation. This comes from the U.S. Economic Development Administration under the Department of Commerce. In this realm, we do just a lot of economic development planning and working with communities. I will note that technically Nottingham, being part of Rockingham County, Nottingham, New Market, and Northwood, all three in the Stratford region, are not technically part of our economic development district, because there was already an economic development district that incorporated all of Rockingham County, and that is REDC, the formerly Rockingham Economic Development Corporation, now the Regional Economic Development Corporation, because they also include part of Hillsborough County now as well. So, I should also kind of make note that the Planning Commission, just kind of that, that name there, Stratford Regional Planning Commission, we are not affiliated with the county. We do include all 13 communities from Stratford County, but also the three in Nottingham, in Rockingham County that I mentioned, as well as Brookfield and Wakefield up in Carroll County. So, we're kind of like the greater Stratford area. So, if you haven't guessed, I'm going to kind of follow along the handout that I have. This goes into a lot more detail. You can read it another time. Something else you get to sleep later. So, as a planning commission, wearing all three of these hats, we are governed by our municipalities. So, municipalities are members of the Planning Commission by choice. I know this is a little touchy subject here. So, each community chooses to be a member by paying annual dues. And I know the last, this current year and this upcoming year, Nottingham is not a dues-paying community. So, what does that mean? You're still there. We still represent you. We still work with you, but we have to kind of adjust how we do things from a business model standpoint, because dues are important to our overall financial health and well-being. So, so what does it mean? As an incentive to having, you know, being a dues-paying community, you get two voting members, but as a non-due paying community, you only have one voting member, and that is Teresa, who represents the town to the Planning Commission. And we limit that voting to the federally mandated transportation programs. Why is that? Well, if you're not contributing dues to the other programs that we are trying to set and establish policy and create a budget around, then, you know, you kind of have to say I'm sorry. It's always awkward and uncomfortable, because we don't like to exclude any of the communities in our region. So, we try and work around it as diplomatically as we possibly can, make sure we still have you at the table, but also have those incentives to be like, you should pay your dues. Yes, sir?
About how much are the dues?
That is a really great question, and I should have looked that number up before I came here. I can look it up before I depart. If I had to guess, Nottingham, you're probably somewhere in like the $5,000 to $7,000 range a year.
Because it's based on population.
It's based on population, yes.
That sounds kind of familiar.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, so, yes, you know, the other bit about the commissioners, they meet monthly. Meeting is actually this coming Friday morning, and this Friday is all transportation topics. We alternate those Friday monthly meetings between our three program areas. So, we had some economic development last month, yes.
Can you briefly explain how the transportation business works within our town? We do have Route 4, 152, 156.
Yes, I have some updates for you.
What are you doing?
Yeah.
That involves this town directly?
And that's why I have my phone here, because I left that printout on my desk, but I have it here on my phone as well, so I can cheat. So, so, yes, so, let's talk a little bit about that transportation side. This is great. So, I mentioned that we work as that intermediary between the municipalities and the state when we're planning transportation improvements. So, every approximately two years, we will reach out to the communities in the region and say, hey, do you have any projects on any of your federally, federal eligible roadways? Typically, your state-numbered routes. And if there's something at the municipal level that you say, yeah, that, I got a problem over at this intersection, we'll take a look at it. If it is a safety issue and there have been fatalities, there are resources that can get deployed almost immediately to come out, take a look at that situation, and potentially make some immediate improvements. It is working with DOT, so it's not like immediate immediate, but it's pretty fast compared to the other track, which is things go into the 10-year plan. And when we say a project goes into the 10-year plan, it goes out 10 years, and you kind of sit and you wait for it to work its way up the queue. So, there is currently the 152 Route 4 intersection project that has worked its way up the queue, and it currently has preliminary engineering and right-of-way scheduled in this year. And we did just get communication from DOT today that they are kicking that off, and there is a public hearing scheduled on the project at the April 21st Board of Selectment meeting at 6:30 PM. So, that is kind of getting underway. There's also another hearing scheduled in Northwood. It's similar timeframe for when the Northwood hearing is scheduled. So, that is out there, and I don't know if you have it on the town website or something for folks to know, but we can help you get that information.
It's going to get posted.
Okay, yeah, it was just today that we got notice ourselves.
Right. They were supposed to come and meet with us this past week.
Okay.
And they postponed it until the 21st.
Okay, all right.
I saw them out there not too long ago, state workers, and I'm like, ooh, beginning to do something out here.
Yeah. So, that project is currently funded at 4.2 million for the intersection improvements. So, that is coming along. Construction is scheduled to begin in 2028. So, they'll take a little bit of, it's, like I said, it is not fast.
And that's entirely funded by the state?
That is a great question. I would have to check if this was 100% funded or 80/20. I don't know off the top of my head what the, if this has a funding split.
Between the towns?
Correct.
The actual intersection in Northwood or is it Nottingham?
It's like right on the town line.
Intersection is in Northwood, but the new intersection will be in Nottingham.
Yeah.
And it's my understanding that the state's got the whole thing. So, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that's, yeah, so my understa, yeah, is that they're also planning to do all of that preliminary input and, and work, public input process with both towns because of that. So, okay. There is also the replacement of the bridge, 152 over the North River. We haven't had any updates on it since a public meeting back in 2024, but DOT did advertise for bids at the beginning of March, so it should be getting, getting underway.
So, it's behind because of property acquisition stuff?
Back.
And they need to do it when there's no school.
Yes.
Oh, that's the one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. And I apologize, Colin in our office manages the transportation program, so I've got like the 50 to 60% view of everything on the details. Colin has got all the details at his fingertips and much quicker than I am, and the go-to person on a day-to-day basis. So, the only other thing that Colin did put in here, and this is related to that, what I mentioned about how every couple of years, we will reach out for new projects. We have, as part of our transportation funding, and this is one of those things where being a dues-paying community would get a little bit sticky. For dues-paying communities, we will pay for some preliminary planning-level engineering for projects that a municipality brings forward. The challenge is, is we use dues to meet the mandatory match for our transportation programs. So, without those dollars, we can't
Match.
Yeah, we can't match. So, so that is just something I'll put out there. For many communities, the value of the engineering that has come out of this has equaled many years' worth of dues in one go. So, just something to kind of keep in mind in the future if you're trying to make the case for paying, paying dues, because that would otherwise be something, a cost that the town would have to come up with and bear to put together that preliminary information to feed a project up into the 10-year plan queue. Without that preliminary engineering, DOT is really pushing back on, on projects moving forward. So, okay.
Thank you.
Huh?
Thank you.
Yeah. So, just a little bit about like what we're currently working on at the regional level and some of the things that we have coming up. I will give huge kudos to the town of Nottingham. So, we are working on our, kicking off our comprehensive master plan update for the region, and we have a survey out right now, and the town of Nottingham is leading the responses to that regional survey more so than the three cities or any other community in the region. So, yeah, so, kudos to, to the town for getting the word out.
I tried to do that and could not get into it. I tried.
You couldn't get into the survey?
Not at all.
That's weird.
Yeah, I tried multiple times, and I'm like
You're going to have to try it.
Yeah, it was weird.
So, to put, to, to kind of embark on this larger comprehensive planning process, we are pulling together multiple of our core plans and different funding sources. So, we have a grant that we're using that will fund the land use and environment section of it. We have our DOT dollars that will cover the long-range transportation component, so we're required to maintain a long-range transportation plan. So, that will also double as the transportation component of our comprehensive plan. We also have, as part of our funding, from EDA dollars to put together a comprehensive economic development strategy that we update every five years. The timing of all of these is coming together to coincide very nicely so that we can do a comprehensive plan update all on that contemporaneous timeline. So, just a little bit of information about those, those planning documents and some links to the existing, the existing plans that are out there. On the transportation side, this one is a little bit uncertain what the future will be of this. So, under the bipartisan infrastructure law, under the Biden administration, there was a new program called Safe Streets for All. We had partnered with the three other metropolitan planning organizations in New Hampshire to apply for the dollars that would cover the costs of preparing the plan that you need to be eligible for implementation dollars. That project is wrapping up and is, final deliverables are due to us from the consultant in June. So, that's something that will be ending soon. The question is whether those implementation grants are going to remain under the current administration or not. So, that is to be determined. If they are, they will provide funding for municipalities to make some safety improvements to transportation infrastructure. So, just something to, to keep in mind that the prerequisite will be taken care of for you. Otherwise, each community to go after those implementation dollars would have had to have done their own plan before they could get those dollars. Okay, so, I'm going to kind of transition into some of the really like robust resources that we have for you as board members. On our website, we maintain a lot of data and mapping information. So, your packet has just like some highlights of what is, is there and available. If you go, you know, kind of, we'll navigate through our imaginations here. If you go to the website and go to the measure menu, you'll find everything right there. There's also some quick links right on the homepage as well. So, we have a whole series of interactive maps, broad range of what is included in there. One of my personal favorites, just on a day-to-day use one, is we have a parcel viewer. The parcel data itself is subject to, you know, getting the updated data from your municipality, but as a planning board member or a staff to a planning board, it is really helpful, because you have access to that GIS data. So, you can kind of go in and take a look at what is going on, on a site that you might have an application for or around that site. So, you can, in that layer, in that map viewer, you can toggle on and off wetlands, flood plains, conservation land, all of the different kind of critical information that you might want to know when you're reviewing an application.
Does that differ from the GIS mapping in the town right now?
I haven't looked at your town mapper. Blair might.
So, the town Nottingham contracts with a private organization called CAI, who maintains your road and parcel data layers, mostly parcel for assessment purposes. When they get updated, we will make a request of the town to ask CAI to work with our GIS staff so we can pull that data in and incorporate it into our parcel and road data layer. We have, you have not done anything about it since 2022. You have a new person in your assessing office, Nancy, who has been working vigorously to get it, get it up to at least through 2024. She's done that, and now I'm working with her to try to get that information over to ours. So, the one, so the short answer is, they're separate, but we do capture your data. We just haven't done it yet to get it up to 2024. So, if you went in today and tried to find a subdivision that we did a year ago, you wouldn't see those parcels yet on our database.
But generally speaking, the SRPC will include our data, so yours will be a greater set of data with the overlays.
That's correct. Yes.
So, yeah, that's what we don't see. Like, some towns I work with, they, they have a pretty comprehensive GIS mapping, which has topo and some other features that we don't have on ours, so.
Yeah, we have that on the viewer.
They're, yeah, we do.
Are you talking about ours?
Well, maybe it was, maybe it was two-foot topos. I was thinking, I was looking for something more detailed or that other towns had, but.
Yeah, we've got the two-foot contours from the Northeast Light Air Project that was done. It's all available on Granite. It's the same data source.
It's where we pull from as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, a few other things we have is we've got a handful of standard maps that are there, ready to roll. So, if you, you know, need a, either a PDF or interactive, we've got a variety of them. Highlight community features, conservation and recreation, land use, transportation, groundwater, surface water, watersheds, and zoning. We also track building permits for all of the communities in the region, and there's an interactive dashboard in there. We can go in and play and see, you know, some of the trends for building permits. And another favorite we have is an interactive recreation viewer that has, oh my gosh, over 300, it's close to like 350, I want to say, recreation sites across the 18 communities, where you can kind of zoom in. There's some photos in there. You can learn a little bit of information about the hours of operation and what might be allowed and not allowed at the facility, what resources or what amenities are there. So, it's, it's a fun, fun one. Another item we have, and I'm pretty sure Blair has shared already, the community profile that we have as part of our data snapshot. I, I always chuckle when we call it a data snapshot, because it's almost an inch thick when it's printed double-sided. So, it's really a series of data snapshots is a better way to think about it. It is a series of one-pagers on every topic you could ever imagine or want when you are thinking about community planning. So, everything from demographics, socioeconomics, all the way through to some transportation infrastructure and everything in between is in there. If you look at the data snapshot and you're like, well, this is only giving me a regional perspective. I need a little bit more specific to my community. Our data team is always able to help with that and get you the information you need. We publish that data snapshot annually concurrent with the April commission meeting. So, it's April 18th that will be published. So, that will be the newest update. Census releases new information every year, November, December. Our staff then goes through and updates all of the document with the newest addition of information that we have. So, that's that in a snapshot. The last thing I have in the packet is just how and why we have dues. So, I've already talked about that quite a bit, but I'll just give you a little bit of the budget perspective on dues. So, dues, at least based on our current fiscal year budget, is, it only comprises 5% of our budget. So, you think, wow, that's not really that big. It's not really that important. The challenge, though, is though, those, of those, that 5% of our total budget, 85% of our dues goes directly to matching our programs that we have, the majority of which goes to matching our federal transportation programs. Those are mandatory. So, to be able to have those programs, kind of have to have dues to do that. So, so it leaves, it leaves only a little bit of dollars left over at the end of the day to provide like that on-demand technical assist- to provide like that on-demand technical assistance. So what we try and do is really maximize how we use your dues to leverage other funding sources so that we can go beyond what we would be able to do otherwise. So that's kind of, that's, that's the organization in a nutshell. And one of the services we provide is contract planners for communities that are only, only really need a part-time planner. And so it doesn't always make fiscal sense for a community to hire a planner for, you know, and on their own books. And it also is challenging to hire a planner for a part-time position. And so that's something where we will contract out. Nottingham is one of five communities that we provide a planner to on, on that contract basis.
We are very grateful to have you.
Thanks, Blair.
So that's what I had in a nutshell. I don't know if there are any questions?
No question, but I did find the email. I knew I had it. For fiscal year 2025, the dues for your community, which would have gone from July 1, 2024 to July 30, 2025, were, were to be $6,662.
Yeah, okay.
Just FYI.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for Jen? Any comments?
I just had a question where on the, which we're going to get to, I guess, the master plan business. Building permit dashboard, we were trying to, you know, track that for the master plan update is. I've never, I've never looked into that on your site, so.
Yeah. So, yeah, so we do have that. I don't know, 2023 might be the most recent that we have updated. And there is always sometimes pulling teeth from some of the communities to get the data. So we're always a little bit slow in getting it up online. Excuse me. We, when we do so, we're pulling a greater level of detail than the state. So I don't know the correct acronym right now. The Planning Office at Business and Economic Affairs at the state, they also track building permits and publish it, but they're just looking at totals. We're looking at numbers and actual addresses so we can map them. So you can look at that, you know, the map to see where there is kind of like, oh, there's a building boom over in this part of town. So you can see it at that level. So it just takes us a little bit longer to get that and get it published.
That sounds like a neat tool for, to be looked at.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, I know as part of working on the master plan, our data team, Blair's already connected with them to, to make sure you get the most up-to-date information. So from their perspective, they are going to wrap up the data snapshot for April. And then you guys are next, you and a couple other communities are, are next for some specific data polls specifically for your master plan. Yeah, after that is published.
Anything else? Ready? Thank you so much, Jen. I appreciate you coming.
Very welcome. Yeah, and if ever you have any questions, reach out. Give Blair a holler. Give me a holler. We're here to help.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and is there anyone who would like to be the SRPC rep moving forward? Because I feel like as chair, that really should not be on my shoulders.
I don't mind doing that.
Are you, Glenn? All right. Nominate Glenn to be the SRPC rep for our town going forward.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, seconded is Drew.
Had I known, I would have brought a commissioner handbook with me. We'll make sure you get that.
Yes.
Yeah, I've got to get a couple of books for the ZBA, so I'll try to get it all together and bring it over. I'll leave it with Alana.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to have Glenn be our SRPC rep. And further discussion, no one else wants to fight him for it? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Need to do a little more research on this. Need to bring myself up to speed.
Okay, so 5:01. All right, thank you. So you'll see a new face there.
All right, we'll look forward to it. The meeting Friday morning. That's good. You still need to go to the select board. Well, the select board formally.
Appoint. That's true.
So, yeah, so the planning board nominates select board at once. So I will have Megan, yes, I'll have Megan send an appointment form to Ellen tomorrow.
And actually, I can go, I think, on Friday. If you want to gather the book or something for him, I could pick it up because we meet next week. Get y'all, we're meeting next week if you want.
Okay.
And you can actually come Friday too if you want.
Oh, what time is it?
The nine.
Nine in Rochester. So right, third Friday.
I work in Rochester, so that's not difficult.
Yeah, so.
Dover by the high school.
Third Friday of the month at 9:00 AM, usually in Rochester.
Okay.
Yeah, the office is right next to Spalding. And it's kind of tricky getting parking. Most of the time you have to park out back and then walk around to the front to get in.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, so our next meeting for select board is April 7th. So that's, it couldn't happen, official appointment couldn't happen till at least then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, master plan update. Who has an update, master plan?
So. I'll let those guys go because I could not attend. I was sick unfortunately, so I didn't get it.
Glad you're better.
Yeah, likewise. Thank you.
So the master plan subcommittee met on, was it?
March 5th, 6:30 PM.
March 5th at 6:30 PM. Both Chris and I were in attendance. There were quite a few other people from Nottingham who attended as well and joined the subcommittee. There was some discussion about the direction that the subcommittee, or I guess the task the subcommittee would be handling. There was a few, oh, requests for data so that people could start getting themselves familiar with kind of housing trends, things like that. Things that we assumed Blair would probably have had for us, were he able to attend the meeting. So, you know, it was basically an introductory meeting where we talked a bit about what our general direction should be, but not a whole lot was pinned down aside from the next meeting date, which will be, oh, April 5th? Is that right? No, that's not right.
It's early April.
It's early April. It's the Wednesday, the first Wednesday in April.
April 2nd at 6:00 PM instead of 6:30.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Yeah, April 2nd at 6:00 PM. Hopefully Blair will be able to.
Yeah.
Join us at that one and kind of set us on, on track a bit more. Anything else that I missed from that? Chris?
I did the minute, so I did take some, some notes and I did send those around. If you'd like, I send a copy and update. You know, we have a list of the members that, there are, I think, nine of us there. And Sarah and Blair could not attend. We talked about introduction. We voted officers. We, one of the things that we, that came out of this was to review the prior master plan to see, well, how did that work? And what would the future goals look like? And, you know, gathering some of the data. So one of the things that we, we looked at, and there was a lot of questions about, was the 2011 master plan had an update implementation guide. And there was a housing section in there and the, and there were several sections in there that people had a lot of questions. Well, what happened with this goal? Did it get achieved and what is the status and et cetera? So to go backwards, to look at that, to see how successful that was and what has happened from there was kind of, it's going to take a little bit of work. So we, maybe we could, you know, hook up with Ed or something. Maybe he can come into our next meeting and kind of go, because he's been on the chair for a while and say, you know, here's some of the things that we did do that are under the planning board's preview. There's a couple that were under the Board of Selectmen's. Our Board of Selectmen member had said that the, you know, the board is only three years. So what happened in 2011 would not be known to somebody, you know, today unless they've been hanging out for a long time on the BOS, so.
I don't know of anybody on the BOS currently that was there in 2011.
Nobody was in 2011, no.
Yeah, no, none of them.
No.
It would be, it would be in the, our annual books. If you look at those.
So I've been.
And actually, that might be a really good place to look. Is to go back through some of our town yearbooks because the, I don't know about the BOS, but I know the planning board has an update for a review of the year in there. Plus in the front of it is all the listings of who's where, you know, what committee, who's on what committee and what their term is. Okay, yeah, I thought I'd seen one. So see how much of those get read by everybody? We, I don't know, we spend a lot of money on those books and I don't know of anybody that looks all the way through them. I mean, I'm on the cemetery commission and I get calls all the time. How much does a lot? It's like, it's in the book, but okay, I'll tell you.
So I did start compiling some of the data, hopefully Blair will also because we see that SRPC has their community snapshot, which I've been kind of pulling some information. So I'm trying to follow the same format of the old master plan and there's some several charts in there. So like on the real estate values, that's easy peasy for me.
Right.
So I'm tracking, you know, making a whole chart. Here's what real estate values did and how many houses sold. And where Alana was helping to gather some building permit information with the building inspector. But there's a lot of permits to put your pool, that build a deck. So how many were for single families? So we did, we're working on that, working on, these are some town things that, you know, outside, you know, what Blair may or may not have, although in here says that they, they're tracking our permits over there. Great. So I'm tracking the new houses on the multiple listing service to say, you know, here's, here's our new houses that are at least showing up in there. But if somebody's building their own single-family house, we're not necessarily seeing that in the real estate side of the world. So it's, it's prone to some discrepancies perhaps. We were also putting together a, or I'm putting together some data on the, you know, number of lots created. And just so we could kind of see a forward, you know, projection on that.
You're talking lots as far as somebody's subdividing their property? Or are you looking at lots like in developments and like a foul zone or?
Yeah, all of them.
All of them, okay.
Yeah, like last year. Again, I'm trying to, I haven't completed this.
That's okay.
It's a lot of work.
I'm sure.
There were, you know, four new houses last year. I have square footages. I have selling prices. There, last year there were nine condos. So I, I have some of that data tracking. On the subdivisions, we have something showing, a year-end report from the planning board that says, you know, there's 24 lots on.
Smoke.
Fort Hill or 25, whatever it is, and two lots here and three lots there and blooder. So here's the total number of lots for each year. I think there's a relationship of, like Fort Hill is approved, but you have zero houses. And, you know, there's a relationship of, you know, here's a, you know, when the lots are created and, you know, probably there's like a three-year pipeline there. I was kind of looking at that to see if we wanted to make a housing change, if there was a housing objective in the, in there to meet certain housing goals or something, how long it would take to get those houses built. So, you know, there's probably three years for a subdivision. According to Dawn, that she said 33 months or something for Fort Hill, for example. And then, and they're not even a house built. So then the infrastructure, there's another six months or whatever, and then building a house, another five months, so.
There's a lot that goes into that though for looking at the impact of it. Not only is there the deconstruction of the sites or the site prep work, but you've got to look at even building materials and getting contractors out because, I mean, those are all in short supply everywhere. So there's a lot of impacts, especially post-COVID, where so many resources were wiped out for getting things, getting houses built.
I'm trying to get electrical panels for a property and they're saying July, just to have a, you know, meter socket.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. Why, I mean, I think this is an unusual time for how long does it take to actually get a house built or even house renovations done? Because we don't have the abundance of supplies or the, and the cost of those supplies that are available has changed so dramatically over the last, just what, three years?
It's going to get worse before it gets better.
Probably.
California, we've got Canada, we've got all sorts of things.
Yep, but it's, who, who knows what that's going to happen, you know, when they put tariffs in.
So a lot of that is going to affect your projections going out anyway. But, but looking at the, the housing is, that's going to keep you quite busy.
Were created over each given year and, you know, how many we need based on the population increase and, you know, what, what might want to change or what direction. You know, I've, I've kind of brought up elderly housing before.
Kind of?
Kind of.
Would you say kind of?
Once or twice. One of those, you know, a lot of old people like me in town and, you know, just someday we might need a place to live. I mean, there are some actually shocking data that I see and I know of. And it's, it's, you know, I, I do have kind of an, I don't want to be taxed out of my town. And I bet there's a lot of people in the town that feel the same.
I bet you're right.
And I think there is a correlation to how many houses there are and how many people there are and the town services and the taxes. It's not just about town spending, it's about the tax base. And.
Well, thank you very much for all your work on that. So we look forward to having an update, not at our next meeting, but in April.
So Blair, hopefully you're going to put together some of the data. And we did, we didn't get to talking about how, what we're going to do next. We just, like, let's try to gather some, what happened with this old plan? And just trying to piece together some of the data to follow the same format as the old master plan is what I've been doing, what data I could use. But I don't know if we really need that data when we're, you know, trying to gather data from the people in the town. Do we want that data first or are we kind of saying, hey, what does everybody see this town look like in five years from now?
Well, the other part too is that we have a HOP grant that we need to address that we didn't really have much discussion on there either. So it was, like you said, kind of a, you know, no, no real forward path was made because there were a lot of kind of question marks up in the air as to what we need to address first, right? So.
You'd be able to guide them on that, right?
Yeah, that's what I would have done, right, had I been there, just to give them an overview and let them know what the timeline is. And that's what I'll do at the next meeting.
Thank you.
It was great to see that, you know, I, I'm not really going to take a lead on this, but I just, for the first one I was because it was a new group that hadn't met yet. So I put an agenda together and stuff like that. So it was great to see that they could, the group, you know, elected officers and, and got themselves organized and gave themselves some sort of direction and path moving forward. I've heard from Dirk, I've heard from Chris, I've heard from another woman that was on the, on the, on the group and another gentleman called me. So I've gotten a little bit of feedback about what the meeting, what happened at the meeting. And, and, you know, going to the next one, again, I'm focused on a housing chapter. Your group is the whole master plan. What you want, how you want to move that forward, that's fine, but that's where I'm focused. And so that's what I'll bring to their attention. And it technically is called the demographics and housing chapter because they understand demographics is such a major part of it. And demogra, and housing is one of the three, I think, sort of required chapters, your vision, your housing, and one other one. I forget what it is. And so they ask you to put the demographics in with the housing chapter. So this one will be a little more data-heavy than other ones. And as Jen alluded to. And as Jen alluded to, we have data snapshots that you guys can all see on, for your, your community on our website, but they're getting refreshed. This communities won't be done until later this year, maybe January. But we're going to try to grab some things now so that maybe some of the key ones are updated, but maybe some of the other ones are still the la-, you know, the last time we did this. I've got to sit down with the primary woman in our office to just say, okay, what can I expect? And then that'll probably be my first conversation with everybody, because yeah, data really is where you start. What are we talking about here? What have we been doing? What do the trends look like? And then you can start talking about, you know, your vision and, and where you want to go as a community and then start getting into the weeds of it. And there's also, the last thing I'll say before I let you guys go back to talking, there's a huge outreach and engagement piece to this. That was a requirement of taking this grant, is that a certain percentage of it had to be put towards specifically engaging with the larger audience of the community. It's great that you already have, what, ten or eleven people on your board or your committee. That's a great indication that this is a topic that people are interested in, want to, and, and want to, want to get involved in. But yeah, that'll be something that we'll have to do, so I'm going to get that going as well. And, you know, we'll have to devise the ways we want to do it. The typical ones are a survey, right? Public workshops, you know, and other sort of engagement type activities.
Have a party out there where people can come by and fill out a survey, that would be a good one.
We've, we did that in New Durham, I've done it in Barrington, we do it on like a Saturday from like nine to twelve. We have a bunch of big group discussion and then you do breakouts or you have people kind of moving around at different stations. They call it the World Cafe style. You can do sticky dots, I mean, we've got all different techniques and.
Hang out at the dump.
Yeah, hang out at the dump, you know, you can do that.
It's a good way to pass out surveys.
So yes, that, that'll be the things that we'll start talking about.
Yeah, we, we did not get in, deep into the outreach, it was just kind of, you know, organizing and, you know, what are we doing and try to, what are the housing needs? I think a couple things that people mentioned were, that I jotted in the notes were, you know, what is this town going to look like in five or 10 years from now? And, yeah, from the zoning boy there, Rain.
Kevin.
Kevin, thank you. And, and then Dawn had mentioned, you know, housing for, you know, all people of all ages and income levels and abilities. So I thought those, those were really, you know, kind of key points. And, you know, I look at, in the real estate business, you know, it's the average first-time home buyer is 38 years old now. And, you know, you look at the school demographics, 42,000 less students in the state and, you know, school enrollment and just, there's trends that are very different from what we saw in 2011 when this was done, we're in a completely different housing market. So just what, 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 what has changed, what does the housing market look like for now and for the future? And is there something that, any change or anything, new direction we need to take and, you know, what does the community want to do? I, I don't know.
I think the harder thing for Nottingham with regards to low-income housing would be that we do not have any infrastructure to support people who don't have cars or a way of getting around to anywhere because your local grocery stores are at least 20 minutes away. And we, we don't have buses, we don't have taxis, you know, we don't have any of that for them. Plus, we don't have community water or septic, I'm not saying I want them, I'm saying we don't have them. So that makes it difficult for a lot of people too, because if you are on low income, you, and you have your own well and you have your own septic, those are added expenses that they don't ordinarily have to be concerned about, like I need to call somebody to, you know, pump my septic. I don't have that kind of money budgeted, whereas if they are in an apartment in the city, all that is a non-issue. So just be aware of, of those issues that, that surround that kind of thing.
I mean, to be fair on something like that, you can design wells and septics for multiple units on a shared system. We do that all the time in Rochester and Stratford, you know, for larger apartment buildings. So, I mean, it's possible, especially if it was someplace like up on Route Four or right near 125, where, you know, the possibility of getting to, you know, a, a ride share or something like that, you know? It would be possible, I'm just, you know, tossing that out there. And I totally agree on the town water and sewer infrastructure, just the cost alone would be prohibitive.
Yeah, it would be phenomenal.
There are too, like you said, the 25, 24 condos up on Route Four, you know, they, they have wells and they have septics and, you know, it's worked. And Barrington, there's a, a project, I don't know if it's 70 condos or something like that and.
Right behind the town office.
Yep, and that's all on a, a wa-, well. And it costs a lot of money to develop the well, but, you know, the developer, it's the same guy that did the condos up on, on Route Four. And he said, you know, those, those were $7,000 per unit. And he said the ones out in Barrington for the 70 units were, was $500,000, but still $7,000 per unit. So if you build a single home and you put a well in, it's going to cost you probably $12,000 today for a well, maybe more.
Twenty.
Twenty?
And, and you're going to make that for our low, low-income housing, right?
Well, no, I, whatever housing, maybe, maybe we have housing for young people or old people or people that, you know, you know, low income, I mean, affordable housing now is like $400,000, that's the affordable level. We have no affordable housing in this town, so.
Which, quite frankly, is not affordable.
Yes, oh, well, you guys have got your work cut out for you all and I'm grateful you're on the, like, subcommittee, I appreciate it. But moving on tonight, this is a point in our meetings where we typically have public comment, there's no one here, so we'll move on. We do have a site walk that I want to remind people of. It's for this committee here, for everybody that's new, you're aware that we do have a Nottingham Business Park case. It's 25 dash 003. And we are scheduled to meet on Saturday, this coming Saturday, at 10:00 AM. And they're asking that we park at the, near the entrance of Shea Concrete, excuse me, that we park and enter across the street from Shea Concrete to get into the business park area. This was decided at our last meeting that we would do that.
I thought they said we were going to pull in behind the building at the, the one to the left of it, was I, did I get that wrong?
I understood they wanted us entering the entrance to, because the, Alana, help me out, Shea Con-
They said across from Shea Concrete.
That's why, what I understood as well.
Right, and they also said something else, like, I think they said the address was like 155 or something, but I don't know.
He made it seem like it would be obvious once, if you found the entrance to Shea Concrete and looked right across the highway, you would see a pretty obvious entrance.
Oh, there's a big sign and there's some new.
But it's not the main entrance.
It's not the main entrance with the big sign, is it?
That's what he wanted to make sure we knew is that it's not the main entrance with the sign, it's across the street from the Shea Concrete entrance.
Because he said the other one is really not as well-developed or?
Yeah, I'll look for your car at the front entrance on Saturday.
I've been to the site before, I've never driven in that main entrance because it never looked passable. But I did go in.
They couldn't plow it, they couldn't.
The, I, I don't remember the guy's name, the one be, behind it, he came here to expand his buildings. Anyway, it was to the left of that, and if you go in, you're right at the back of the building, right there, so it's.
Okay, well, most of.
I think that is closer to where, I think that is the entrance that you're talking about, we're both talking about the same thing, it is in that general vicinity. But look for Shea Concrete, right across the street is where we're supposed to enter.
So we'll, we'll just.
Bring a whistle.
Find, Marco.
All right, so hopefully we'll see you all there. We also have some draft minutes for February 26th. And I know y'all wouldn't have any corrections or anything to it, but do the two of you have anything on it? I did notice that there is a question on.
I'm going to just say, I didn't even look at them at all, so if you want to push to look at them next meeting.
I haven't had a chance to look through them.
Okay, so we will move those to the.
Minutes, okay, there's a tab for minutes.
It's near the back of your binder, yeah.
I'll pull those out of here, so, thank you.
All right, and staff board, select board updates, Alana, do we have anything, we have a meeting next week?
Yes, so, meeting next week, the new people don't have, I'm not going to be sending out materials for all the cases. There's one case that I will, and I actually meant to bring them tonight to this meeting, so I'll just mail those to you guys. And, what was I going to say? So the binders, just so you know, those do stay here. I did, I do have new binders for the board and I want to put the subdivision regulations in the new ones, because they weren't in these, but the board uses them a lot. And then I'll also, once the zoning ordinances need to be updated as well, so once I update those, I'll get them in the new binders for you guys. There's one case so far that's come in for next month.
Okay.
Do the, do the minutes get mailed, emailed?
I, I meant to mail these, I did, so if you want to take those out of the binders, take home, that's fine. I mean, I'm going to try to start mailing them to you guys. I usually just email them.
That's, yeah, emails, huh, emails.
Yeah, I do usually try to email. And they're by law, they have to be posted within a week anyway, so they're always on the calendar, so you know, after a week anyway.
Okay, perfect, okay. Well, you, I think Blair, I think you did this for the new members last year. You sent a whole bunch of stuff, so you have there, these guys' emails and stuff. There's, you know, our bylaws, there's, I know you know these, right? Site plan and subdivision regulations, so there's three sets of documents that, you know, we're all looking at. And then our bylaws for, and then what I, one of the things I found really super interesting and helpful was, it was like 176 pages unfortunately, but I, I did read through most of it.
Because he's that kind of guy.
Yes, I do, I read boring stuff like this. I told the lawyer once, I read all this stuff and he's like, you're weird. Just interesting on roads and developments and stuff like that, I'll follow. Anyway, the, the 176-page, how to be on a planning board was really kind of very interesting and a lot of stuff in there, so.
Yes, I, I just got everybody's email from, from Alana a couple days ago, the three new members, and so you're now on my, my list. So there are things I'll send out to you. There's an Excel spreadsheet that's very helpful, it's something that I have put together. It has links to helpful things, things that you will find useful in being a member, in reviewing applications, things related to law and best practices for engineering stuff, so. And then there's a tab that I'm slowly developing on state permitting, as I find information, I add to it. But that'll be something that's helpful, so it's a good, it's a good place to start for you. And, you know, like what Chris was just talking about, how to be a good board member is one of the links that are in there, so. And then there's trainings constantly, which you will get emails from me, like I have one teed up already that New Hampshire Municipal Association sent out. This one's about lot line adjustments, so there's trainings that are coming up. There are things that'll be helpful, some will be very specific, like lot line adjustments, some will be more broad, how to be a good board member. And I'll just, you know, you'll just get those from me periodically. So expect that this week definitely, yeah, so tomorrow or Friday.
And because the Nottingham Business Park is going to be a case we will be continuing on, it would be helpful for you, I'm sure, if you review minutes, the last couple of minutes, because you'll see some of the discussion, or even review the video feeds so that you can see what we talked about, so that it won't be like a, all, when you, when you get in on that, because there's, there's a lot of moving parts to these, especially these site plan and big subdivision cases that we got. It can be kind of overwhelming if you're, haven't been kind of cued into what's going on with them.
It's going to be fun coming up to speed, that's for sure.
Yeah, it'll take a little bit.
Yeah, it's, the interesting thing too, I think, in our town is that Alana or someone, posts like all the documents for the, the, the application.
Which is really helpful.
All the updates on it. And some towns don't post anything, because I go to different towns on occasion and some towns, you, you can't find anything. And, you know, we could go on our site at any time, if you say, oh, I'm missing the plan, you could go right onto our own website and see the stuff. So it's super helpful to kind of get up to speed. We have a couple, the, the Bo-, Business Park one, and it's a five-lot subdivision up on Deerfield Road coming in.
Actually, speaking of that one, I should probably recuse myself on that as I'm one of the abutters. Just tossing that out there.
You, the, tipping point for recusal is if you are someone who is intimately involved with it at all, like it's going to benefit you in some way, or maybe you're related to the person and you feel like you, because I did that when my niece came in for something, I recused myself because I didn't want to have any, anybody saying I had any influence on it. But just being an abutter, Blair, I don't think.
Well, the other thing is also that I'm a professional surveyor, so I don't want any, you know, appearance of any sort of.
Okay, impropriety, it's totally fine. I mean, it, it's definitely a personal decision to step away, but, okay.
And we would discuss before the meeting and then make a vote on that, I think, is the rules on 673.
To recuse?
Yeah, I think.
We don't have to vote on that.
No, it's just, it's a personal decision.
And then if we have an alternate, the alternate is seated for that meeting that the member accuses themselves from. And also, it's up to the member to recuse themselves from a, from a case, they don't have to, they can't be forced to. It's completely up to the member to decide for themselves, so just know that.
It's a personal thing.
Yeah, right.
But it is, they, as far as, like if you had an investment or whatever in that, it would be good if you did, because if you don't and you did stay, somebody would, could say something, but it is, it is your own personal decision. And the board doesn't have anything to say on that.
Okay, I thought there was a, I was reading something about that, not so long ago.
It must have been too late at night when you were reading it.
I read a lot of things.
Speaking of alternates, do we need alternates?
Of course, yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Do we, how do we do that?
Well, we, we plead to the people watching who may, you know, may be out there interested that we have a free spot on the board for an alternate and could desperately use one, we've had a free spot for a number of meetings now. And we thankfully have a full board here, but having an alternate is very helpful as well.
Yes, yeah, if you know somebody, you know, you can bring them on in.
If you're thinking about joining the planning board, it's a great way to kind of get involved without giving a full commitment.
That was what I did initially.
And outside of the voting, we can appoint a, a member to, the, the board can.
You mean for an alternate?
Yes.
Yes, well, yeah, we, I'd say yes, you can vote on that. And then the alternate is able to sit up here at the table with us, hear all of the case, be part of the discussion, but they cannot vote unless they are seated for somebody.
That's how it works.
Yeah.
Do we normally have just one or?
We can have up to five.
Oh geez, is that right? Have we ever had more than?
No, two.
And a board up to seven, is that what it is?
Correct.
So you're one shy of what your, what your full board is allowed to be.
So there's one member who was elected who is not here at this meeting, so we do have a full board, we just have one absent member.
There is.
Yeah.
Do you have that person's email?
It's Denny Arsenal.
It wasn't on that list, that, that Excel spreadsheet?
It's Danny Arsenal.
Oh. Maybe yours was.
It's six plus minutes.
Yeah, I, I need, I just need your email to get you on my list.
My email?
Yeah, give me, give me one second, John.
All right, and let's, well, he's working on that. Anything else for the board tonight?
I do.
Okay.
But you, but go ahead with everybody else.
John, anything for the board tonight?
Okay, so, Jen did talk about the New Hampshire DOT coming to select board on, uh, April twenty-first to discuss the four, the Route Four, one fifty-two intersection. Um, additionally, we had, so we had our D O S meeting this past Monday, we did talk about that. And, it was supposed to happen last week. Um, the other thing that we did, we approved, um, the rec department to do a mural out here, so, other than that, it's just regular business.
Okay, nice, thank you. Joe, anything?
Um, I think the only thing that I wanted to point out were the, uh, results of the warrant articles that, uh, this board put before the voters. They all passed by quite a large margin. The steep slopes, uh, district passed with over seventy-five percent uh, of the voters.
Man.
Voting to approve that. Um, so, I read that as a kind of indication to what the people in this town are looking for in terms of protecting the, you know, special places that we have.
Right.
And that's it for me.
Oh, thank you. Um, I think one thing we need to be mindful of as a board too is not having so many warrant articles go on to the ballot in one year.
Yes, yes.
So that we don't have six pages worth to.
Yeah, I think that steep slopes took up one entire page, maybe more.
Unfortunately, you have to put the old and then the new, which makes it really long.
But took a fair amount of wo- work from members, past members, and some current members of this board, you know, getting that together and putting it forward, and so, you know, it was a long time coming, I think. It was something that was in our previous master plan to implement, and so that was, I believe, one of the last major, um, ordinance, you know, uh, suggestions from the last master plan update that was implemented.
Finally implemented, great, thank you guys, that was good work. The only thing I want to en- cue people on is to look at the state legislative offices. Alana heard me say this last night, if any of you tuned in, I mentioned it last night, cause there are a lot of land use. Bills, a lot, a lot. Um, and s- some of them are, could have an impact on our zoning ordinances, so please take a look at those, and if you have, are so inclined, reach out to the state reps or senator as, as necessary for those. Is that anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Yeah, um, uh, this would be a, a time when I would normally tell you about trainings and things like that. Um, there is one coming up by the New Hampshire, um, Municipal Association, that I was gonna share with everybody. They're called, it's called their Do's and Don'ts webinars. They have one coming up on the do's and don'ts of adopting ordinances, but it's not just related to zoning. I believe it's also your regular town ordinances. So it might not be totally applicable, but it might still be, but it is still applicable and might be of interest. But the second one is the one that I was mentioning about the do's and don'ts of lot line adjustments and mergers. Lot line adjustments are a type of subdivision, so they're handled here. Unmerging and, I think just unmerging is handled by the Board of Select.
Right.
But we will handle mergers here. So, we just finished up with one, we've been dealing with it all day today, as a matter of fact. They're annoying, but they are a part of what we do, so, uh, it might be worth getting into. Just heads up, these are two of the more drier things that you'll deal with, mergers and lot line adjustments. But it might be a good, you know, a good place to start to just learn, learn about what you're gonna be doing here. So I will forward that tomorrow, it's just a heads up. Um, I like to hit you twice with it, um, you know, telling you about it and then, then sending it off. The other thing I wanted to, to go over, um, do you want to take a minute and talk about your email, asking for a list of what's sort of out there? While we have other members in the rooms, we can make sure that we're capturing everything.
My email to you guys? To, to you and Alana?
Yeah, asking about the status of.
I just was asking i- if there was an update on, I'd have to even look at, did you respond to me?
No, I didn't, and that's why.
Okay.
I responded at the beginning of the meeting.
You did?
Yeah, just that I, I used to keep a spreadsheet of that.
Oh, yes.
Haven't been, so I, I basically just said I can get that to you on Friday. There isn't much outstanding right now, so it shouldn't take me long, but.
Okay.
I only have two things that are outstanding.
Probably, yeah.
York subdivision, which is the ones that had the, the, uh, power line going through it.
Correct.
We're dealing with that. We finally got the language sorted out with Susan, and got them to be agreeable to it on the easement that's in the back.
Okay, and Susan being our legal counsel.
Former, we just signed with a new company. I don't even know who they are. Like, this just happened, so, but Susan was our former town council, the primary contact form, former town council for this board at least. I don't know if you guys use a different one or something.
No.
Same, same one, okay. Um, so we got that sorted out, so we're waiting on their milars. Cause I have looked at everything, and I approved what they've submitted. We're just waiting on the milars, which we would then sign, and the board would sign. So that one's already been reviewed. Johnston is the one that we just approved, lot line adjustment and mergers. And, um, we're waiting on their milars. I will have to review them, and then you guys sign them.
Okay, and what about Fauzone's, is everything all set with?
All done, that's.
He's all done now?
Yeah, so, currently, at this point, um, the way we've kind of figured it out, or it's kind of developed into is like, pretty much, as soon as the, the planning board signs, the milars and the plans, the advocate takes it to the registry of deeds, after that, I'm kind of done with it at that point. And I've been giving it off to, like, Ellen and the highway department, and they kind of, I've been taking it from there. I don't know if that process will change, I certainly don't mind doing more after that, but that's kind of how it's been.
Okay.
For those two major subdivisions.
Cause there's been so much back and forth email that I've been seeing over, the, we've had a lot come before the, the board, especially this past year. And the, the cases are big, and it's like, I was getting, like, at a cross-eyed trying to track what was happening.
It was hard, there was, there was a lot back and forth with town council.
It's true.
Blair, Pete, and like, so many emails.
Yes, yes. So we're basically starting with a clean slate, except for, um,
The York.
Industrial Park.
Well, we still have, uh, I mean, a clean slate in what, what we expect. I mean, right now, there's, there's four-ish items still before this board, that have not been decided on. Business Park being one of them. Uh, the Stevens Hill, one sixty-three Stevens Hill Road, which is a small two lot subdivision.
Yeah, we just took care of some of that last night on C B A.
Ah, right, that's what we've been waiting on, okay.
Yep.
Business Park is at C B A too.
Yes.
Okay, and then there's a conceptual that's not coming until April.
Okay.
Um, and then, there's this thirty-five Deerfield that, uh, uh, Chris mentioned a little bit ago. Which will be having an initial public hearing, so this is all gonna be good for you guys, you'll get to see this from start to finish, uh, and that's next week.
Okay.
So there's four items, a conceptual is kind of an ish item, but, you know, there's four items before the board at the moment.
Johnson, Johnson was the fourth one.
No, four items before the board.
That one's done.
Sixty, one sixty-three Stevens Hill Road, Nottingham Business Park, the conceptual with Bassett, and then this thirty-five Deerfield Road. There's two items that have been decided on, but we're waiting on milars and signatures and mine review. That's York, and then Johnston, the lot line adjustment.
Okay.
And then this is the last thing that I wanted to add. The other ones that these guys have been alluding to. When we do a complex subdivision or a major subdivision, if it involves a new road, that takes on a, a whole new life of itself. Because the road obviously has to get built, we have to make sure it gets built to standards. We have a third-party engineering firm that will go out and do inspections and reviews, and stuff like that. Part of the thing that's been hanging us up is that some of these, um, roads are no longer. We're supposed to require a bond, according to our regulations, a road bond, to protect the town in case they start slashing through the woods and then go bankrupt, and now you've got this big exposed thing. They're supposed to put up bonds so that we can, in theory, finish the road, or do something to stabilize the area. The legislature, in its infinite wisdom, has said that is no longer required, unless they pull a building permit for a lot or sell a lot. You have to have the road finished, or put up a bond. So, it's no longer front-loaded, it's now essentially back-loaded, which means they could still start it, fail, and we don't have any money. That's the hang-up. That protection is what a bond is for, is no longer there. We have been dealing with this with two different applicants, and trying to understand what the regulation means, what we're supposed to do, what we can ro- require, and then how do we respond to that? So, yes, there has been a lot of emails, there has been some confusion. I think we're on gooding footing now. It sounds like internally within the community, there's a process. Alana hands it over to Ellen, and she, it just goes into a, a vast emptiness, and we don't worry about it anymore, but, in theory, this board still technically has a role. We don't do enforcement, but we have some kind of oversight. We can make a statement to the Board of Select and say, go enforce something. But, that is, I think the issues of, like, emails flying around and confusion will settle down a little bit. I think we've, we've stabilized things a little bit.
Okay.
I now get all of Alana's emails to her land use clerk, um, email address, so I'm seeing them without having to wait several days for her to, till she, the day she works for the board, so I get to see him, I can get on top of things faster. So don't talk any trash about me to her, because I can see it. That is the warning. Um, I'm still waiting for that email to come through. But, um, uh, it is, it's actually making things infinitely better. I'm able to get, um, get on top of things faster and respond to people. So, um, yeah, I think we'll see things quiet down a little bit, but, yeah, there, there's a few outstanding, but I think, I think we're under good control.
It sounds, that sounds better.
So in regards to that bond, road bond issue, is that something that we, as a board, can say, no, we want that upfront? No, this is a state legislature that overrules our local bylaws. Okay. And that was part of the problem, cause we was like, well, we still have it in our bylaws, do we have to hold to it? And there was also the way it was written, it said, may require, so it gave everyone the impression that we still had the choice, but every, every legal opinion that we received has told us, no, it's, the intent by this legislature was that you cannot require it until at these two trigger points, a sale or a building permit pull. So, no, we don't have a choice anymore.
Blair, is that complicated projects that are underway in town that have not had to post bonds since that, um, legislation came down?
I mean, in short, yes, DeBerto is kind of that, cause he started, but he was supposed to have a bond. Because I think he technically predated it, but there was a big drag, there was a big lag in there, we weren't really sure. That was kind of the one that settled us off, and then Fauzone had maybe two others that had been sitting out there that we were trying to get ahead of, and, um, and he moves fast, cause he's prepared, right? DeBerto was clearly not, but, you know, the, the, with, with what he needed to do to get going. Uh, Mr. Fauzone has done this a lot, so he's able to move faster, and, and so we were just trying to get on top of it without being crossed with the, with the legislation. So, I think we're on top of it. Um, yes, there was some confusion. But I think through, it was just internal staff, and then some communications with Ed, um, but yeah, that's, I think we're kind of on top of it now.
Okay, and we haven't had any projects that have begun work and then gone bust?
Fingers crossed, not as of yet, yeah, I mean.
I figured not, but just worth an ask.
With the cost of putting down roads now, um, it, you know, it's, it's, it's not unlikely. But, um, you know, obviously, in a way, it's out of Ryan's, there isn't much we can do.
When did this law go into effect?
If it wasn't last year, it was the year before. Cause you know, it, it's like the, when did the legislature pass it, when did the governor sign it? And then was there a delay in, in, you know, and it becoming effective? I, I'd have to go back and look, but it's, it's, it's in recent memory, you know, enough so that I'm trying to talk to you about it now.
And the same goes with the legislative stuff coming, you know, this, like, whole thing about, uh, the ADUs and adding a lot of definition and change to that, that, um, when that passes, presumably, if it passes, they, there's an implementation sixty days from when it passes, which puts us right in the middle of our year with our zoning regs, and then the state laws conflicting, so we gotta figure out, you know, how do we.
Cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, right, but it's, there's a bunch of changes, so this is gonna be a challenging year perhaps.
Yeah, I just want to do a big housing conference on Tuesday, oh, yesterday. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, all anybody in the country's talking about right now, the governor has said all of the above. So they're clearly looking at it. Um, and yeah, there's a lot of bills that were put forward two years ago, last year, that didn't make it out of committee, or maybe got in front of the full legis-, you know, maybe got through one house, uh, in the positive, but the other house killed it. I think there was a veto of some stuff, so, but it looks like this year is actually proving to be a lot more aggressive. I think people were waiting for the sort of politics to settle down. Now you know who your governor is, you know who your president is, and I think you're seeing stuff take off. Um, no idea what's gonna come of all of it. But, as everybody's indicating, there is a flurry of things. A great thing to do is go to some of these, um, agencies and some of these, uh, trade groups, like, you know, uh, New Hampshire Municipal Association, and get on their newsletters. Especially now that you're here, and, um, see what they're saying, and, and, you know, uh, trainings and education things and stuff like that.
N H M E's a real good resource for us. Yeah, all right, same thing, yeah, go ahead.
So normally, this, we, the board would look at the bylaws.
Right.
So I do think that's something you might want to put on the agenda for next.
Yes.
I don't know, next week or next month.
Ne- next, go ahead.
So should we pull them out of here?
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Yeah, um, with not having one member here, I'd like to, to wait, so, if we can, um, beginning of April. Cause I know, it, technically, we do it typically in March, but I don't think that's a big deal if we wait. Does anybody else disagree with that decision? I think it would be nice if all members have a chance to look at the bylaws and so that we can make any recommendations on them. Do you, I'll agree with that, or?
We did, um, adjust them last year, um, there were just some small, small housekeeping things. I don't, do we recall any?
One of them was adding the secretary ba- back in, I don't know if it's back in, but adding the secretary as, you know, the person down the line who could chair a meeting.
Right, right.
As previously, that both the chair and vice-chair had to recuse themselves, so there was that change. And then I think the others were just really small house, housekeeping type changes, but I, I can't remember the rest of them. It was only a few, handful, and I don't remember anything more major than, you know, the secretary into the line of, uh, roles that could fill the chair position.
And at some point, we're gonna have to, um, look at, you know, um, the new changes that just got on the warrant article and how to implement and, you know, where, where they fit in and.
Yeah, Alana will make sure we get those copies, and they'll just be in our binders so that we can move forward. Cause anything that comes before us now falls under those. Right, anything else?
Yeah, one more thing.
That's okay.
Chris Berry submitted something for DeBerto.
Yes, that, that's the one for next month, I guess.
That's thirty-five Deerfield?
No. Nope.
Okay, so then that means that there's five things that'll, that'll be before this board.
Not, well, four for next meeting.
Okay, yeah.
One new one for next month.
Yeah.
But yes.
So there's four for next week?
No, I'm sorry, three for next week, one is a conceptual for April, and a new one for April so far.
Yeah, where, where will that, where, which, what meeting will the DeBerto line be on?
That will be the first meeting in April.
Okay, yes. So eventually, there'll be five things before this board. But not, they won't be on all of the meetings.
Right, no, shouldn't be all five-on-one, that, that, that's not how we could handle that. That, that, we could handle that, having five cases in one evening.
And just a best practice for those of you that come to the sidewalk. The sidewalk is open to the public as with any meeting. We do take minutes, it's treated like a normal meeting. The point of a sidewalk is to obviously physically see the site. It is not to engage in discussion and debate.
Right.
So, when you're there, if you have to ask a clarifying question, please do that. Either direct it to the chair or whoever's chairing the meeting or the applicant. Beyond that, just hold on to it, keep it for the meetings. When we're back in the room, in public, cameras, all the fun stuff. So, the minutes are literally just supposed to be, we showed up, we walked, we left, right? It's not supposed to be a debate. And, but ask clarifying questions if you have them. What's this, what's this, you know, that's fine. So, those are just best practices. And-
Will our conservation be there at the walk?
Sorry?
Will the conservation be at the sidewalk?
I mean, they haven't been involved with this, this project, so I don't believe. So, I mean, it's a public sidewalk, so they might.
Yeah.
But the reason that the Conservation Commission was part of the last sidewalk was because that project had gone before the Conservation Commission because it's on a scenic road.
And had the wetland crossing.
No, they had to go because it was on a scenic road.
Oh.
That was what required them to go before. You know, the planning board could have asked them to do that, but that was why they went before and that's why the ConCom was involved with that one. But it's going to be up to whoever's on the Conservation Commission to attend this Business Park one, because I don't think it's got any, it currently doesn't have any involvement with the Conservation Commission.
Correct. And just wear smart shoes.
Yeah.
These are undeveloped sites.
They warned us last night, you're going to want boots. Like, really, you're thinking, I mean, especially it's supposed to be raining the next couple of days, starting tonight. All right, anything else?
Just a quick question, actually. If there is, like, for example, wetlands crossings that are going to need DES approval and whatnot, generally, do, if we have questions about that, do we go through SRPC? Or is that something that we need to ask directly?
I'm guessing, I don't quite understand your question on that.
So, for example, if there was a project where there was a major wetlands crossing that they had to get the appropriate permits for through DES, is that something that we would ask directly to get from DES? Or the applicant brings that information to us?
The applicant would be.
Okay.
If I understand your question correctly, the applicant would say they've already applied for DES approval or they already have it.
I, I mean, our standard order of conditions, the standard conditions, to be say, you know, any other permits that you need to get, or is a condition subsequent? I, I gotta double check on that one, if it's present or not. But point is, they have to get their permits, they know.
Yeah, yeah.
Most will start here before they go to the state, most because the state takes longer.
Right.
So, they're usually doing it in parallel, but typically, we end up deciding first. And then they, they continue on. But it's like your, your, your notice of decision has conditions on it and one of those will be getting all your other stuff together.
Right.
The trigger to have specifically the Conservation Commission involved is if it's on a scenic road or if it requires a conditionally used permit. Some of ours, conditionally used permits in our zoning get sent to them, some do not. But ones where, if you want to encroach, I think on a buffer, that it requires their advisory review. And there's other triggers too, but that's the general gist.
Yes, sometimes it's the species that are within the area that may be impacted, where, you know, somebody will say, "We really need to have ConCom in it", but-
And of course, as with anybody and any entity, they are welcome to comment at any time. They could submit letters, they've done that. But in terms of like, from a regulatory standpoint, where they have to appear before them, you know, those, those are the triggers.
Right, and does that answer your question?
Yep.
Good, anything else?
Blair, did you need my email?
You know what, I just get it from, from Alana, and it, or you could just-
It's, it's just jdecker@nottingham-newhampshire.gov.
So, you want, you want to say it on air, you can. Or you can see him after.
It's on the website.
That one, yes.
And his cellphone number is.
Mother's maiden name and PIN. Thank you, yeah, like I said, I just want to be able to, I have a group email that I can just type in one thing, so I get to get everybody on there. Once I do that, then I'll send you the stuff that I have, but it'll be tomorrow or Friday.
Everybody else set?
I'm just going to ask Blair, on the upcoming, you're going to the Master Plan Committee, April two or whatever it is, do we want to try to advance any information before so people are looking at it for the first time at the meeting?
Yep, that won't happen this week, but I will start looking at it next week to, to get it off to you.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And, and I'll probably, what I put together, I'll probably just send off, I don't think I send off to you or to everybody, just to say, you know, here's, here's what I come up with part, part.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Just, I guess it's just to the two of you, just remember, you are an official committee, you are a subcommittee of this group, so open meeting laws still apply. So, if you circulate something, that's fine, but please don't reply, all right? We cannot have a discussion.
A good way to avoid that is to use the BCC function with your email client. BCC means Blind Carbon Copy, and so essentially, you put in all the email addresses that you want to send an email to in your BCC field, and people who receive that email only see you, the sender. They don't see any of the other recipients, and so that completely prevents anybody from hitting Reply All and accidentally making an informational email a public meeting by accident.
Yeah.
Just be aware, use BCC judiciously.
You can always ask a question, just be smart with what you're doing. That's just the general, general gist. But just try to avoid talking about specific cases at any time.
Unless they're here.
Yeah, and, and that's also true, like even, even in this room, they still should be, they should be in the room. You could say, "Do we have this case next week?" or something like, so clarify, again, clarifying questions, but discussion, debate questions. Just avoid that on email or without people in the room.
Because that can get us in trouble.
Yes.
Right, anything else?
Yes, one last thing.
Chris?
Was, a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion to adjourn? No discussion of motion to adjourn.
You've been here too for a long time. On these implementation, which was a guide from the master plan, there were a lot of questions, a lot of questions about that. You're like, well, what happened? What's happened from the last one? Is, how do we, what, what would you suggest for kind of filling in the blanks if we're going to?
I think she already said to look at the town reports, because those would show what has been implemented that year, right? And so, if you start it in 2011 and look at the town reports year after year, you'll see which warrant, warrant articles passed, you'll have updates from the planning board and zoning board, I think zoning board, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that, that information should be captured there as well. I don't know that anybody's kept, you know, a spreadsheet over time.
Right, right.
So, but I think Teresa earlier mentioned that that would be a good, good place to find that info to compile it.
That's where I would go.
Yeah, all right. So, like, one of the implementations was like a downtown district adopting that, which I think was done along the way, but I don't know if that has made any, there's been any sort of meetings that have come up, you know, you live down here, so. You know, has that resulted in any changes to housing or any?
I, I haven't noticed that at all. I mean, Nottingham has really just kind of moved out into the woods with all of these subdivisions and stuff that have come in. I haven't seen anything within the, and I don't even know, for me, downtown would be this area.
Right, right.
There's not been a lot within this district itself.
Yeah, and there's something about the commercial, and I, you know, I'm aware that the Commercial District had, you know, allowed residential and then that was voted out a few years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And then, so, you know, that's-
And that was because, specifically because the town want, felt that Route Four was a better location for industry.
Yeah.
And we realized that we don't have a lot of that within town and where we do have a lot of res. So, you know, just make that more of-
The tax base from industry is a lot more valuable to the town than single-family housing by far, so making that amenable is a wise thing, planning-wise, I think.
Yep. Right. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, second.
Thirded.
Fourthed.
Fifthed.
All right. Thank you, everybody. See you all next week.